Okay, it's six oh two, we'll call the meeting to order, we'll call the roll. Barker.
Here.
McCain. Wertz.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Rust.
Here.
Handfelder? Is he on? Okay. Trent?
Here.
And Griffin?
Here.
Can we do the pledge of allegiance? Okay, now's the time for public comment, do we have anyone wishing to address the board? Okay. I'd like to introduce Hastings and Shaveta, is that right, are they here?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, they're online.
Oh, they're on Zoom?
Yes, so they're, yeah.
Chris?
They had planned to be here, but there was an illness, so like literally last minute.
Chris Shaveta?
Yes, good evening, I'm Chris Shaveta with Hastings and Shaveta Architects, and I apologize, I'm the one with the bug, so I didn't want to infect anybody on your committee tonight, and Alan Wolfe from my office is joining me to help, because my voice might cast off a little bit in the middle of our presentation tonight. Would it be okay if I did a screen share of our information to share with everyone this evening? So I will, I hope you can see the first slide up on the, first slide up on the screen there. Maybe not. One second here, something happened to my screen sharing capability, I apologize for that.
I could see it, Chris.
Okay, okay, great, there we go. All right.
Well, no, I cannot, there, it's coming.
All right, does that work out?
There it is, yep.
All right, it doesn't have a black line in the middle of it, does it, on mine it does, I just want to make sure.
No.
Okay, let's just, let's just zoom, being zoomed with me tonight. Well, good evening, everybody, I'm Chris Shaveta with Hastings and Shaveta Architects. Alan Wolfe is joining me tonight at our project designer to talk about the main complex renovation plans. We're very excited to be part of your design team to work with campus and all the campus constituents on it. I thought I would spend just a few minutes tonight and go through a few of our team members that'll be joining us. Rain Ward will be our project executive, Carl Dreifall will be our project manager. We have architectural preservationists, we have electrical and mechanical engineers, we have environmental consultants on our team. This is a team that we've all worked together before. We have a number of projects that we've all completed with the Capital Development Board, and actually Farmer and Associates is very familiar with your campus, having done some previous remediation work overall. Hastings and Shaveta is a firm that's located in St. Louis, but we've had the opportunity to work throughout the state of Illinois, and throughout the nation, actually. We're recognized as kind of a educational architectural firm, higher education and K through 12 education. While we're headquartered in St. Louis, we're a quick forty minute drive from campus, and we work throughout the nation. So, one thing we like to do is bring the experiences that we've seen across the nation to your campus, and talk about some of the trends we see, some that have worked really well on other campuses, and really talk to your stakeholders into a design solution that meets your specific needs on campus and no one else's. Through our RFP process, there was a question about what kind of job we've done that are similar take and quality. So this is just a very simple summation of complex renovation projects, all the way to phase renovations, for remediation work, just showing you a little bit of the work that we've done throughout the nation and in the local vicinity for various projects. Over the last several months, since being selective, we have been going through a process of getting familiar with your buildings, your campus, and your organization. We've been trying to understand how the buildings organize, what are some of the issues that we have to overtake and overcome, I should say, in the overall project. And I know that the recent cold weather created some issues within the building itself, when we had the extreme cold weather right before the holidays. We've visited the main complex, we've been through it several times, and Al will show you at the end of our presentation, we've actually created a comprehensive three dimensional laser scan of the building itself. So we're getting very familiar with all of the intricacies, all the different floor elevations, and all the spaces and components within the building. And I started off and jumped right in, please, if you have any questions as I go through, please stop me and let me know if you have any thoughts, or if you want me to comment on anything further as I go through our presentation. So this is our main complex site visit that we've had. We've also know that as part of the project, we're going to have to talk about exterior ADA assessment to the building. That is only, that's not only coming from parking with designated signage and distance to entries, but pass of travel and how we optimize openings and sizes in operable building parts as we go through it. So it will be a comprehensive renovation to the complete complex. As part of the funding requirements in the state of Illinois, we'll also be looking for a LEED Silver Certification for the project. This will be integrated into the workshops with our stakeholders, it'll be coordinated through all of our meetings. We will document it from beginning to end, and it'll actually go through construction and commissioning of the final building as well. So we know that it's really important to make this a sustainable project, and to make it really a unique, sustainable project, since we're dealing in some very historic structure, you might say. Also, as part of our project, we were looking at some of the campus issues that you faced in the past. We know that Baldwin Hall had some old present, some old issues. There's been some limited specialist inspections on the building. Our new scope of work will be doing a comprehensive management plan of all hazardous materials, and really the five buildings that make up the complex itself. So it'll not only be in Wade, Caldwell, and Reed Hall, so we'll have to combine all of those to make sure that we're working and looking at each of those buildings individually and as a complex as we look at the renovation. We will do the same thing from a historic architectural perspective as well. Our consultant comes out of Chicago, they're very well known in the state of Illinois. They've worked with the Historic Commission in the state of Illinois on a number of projects, so they'll be bringing their expertise as we have challenges like windows and things like that that we're trying to replace in keeping the historic components in place for the building. We know also this complex needs to be fully upgraded and modernized with the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems. That's what MEP stands for up there. We'll look at how we're going to evaluate those systems, how we coordinate into the historic structures, how do we establish the lead approaches and energy optimization for the systems, and then the appropriate HVA systems for lighting and controls. We always want to say we don't want to over complicate a building, we want to make sure it's the right and complete approach for that building to make it operate for a long term, the most energy efficient that possible going forward. So our RTM consultants will be helping us with that, and they have been on your campus for a number of years and know your systems very, very well. So how will our team kind of pull this apart, pull this together? One of it is, we use a collaborative approach to our design process. We've actually been engaged with your mover committee already. We've established a series of on-campus and virtual workshops, they will actually start next week on Tuesday and Wednesday. We're looking for broad campus participation. There's been some initial goals that have been established by your mover committee for the project. And the second phase will be analyzing the program analysis to explore the concepts and also develop budget models for that, those concepts that we're considering. So just before the holidays, we had the opportunity to meet with your mover committee, and they put together a series of what we call a really high level purpose and framework for the project, and how we might be organizing going forward in the building. We know that we're going to touch student life, we're going to touch academics, we're going to touch administrative spaces, and we're going to touch recruitment enrollment within this one complex. So it is a complex series of buildings, it'll be a complex, complex solution, bringing all the stakeholders together. But we're looking forward to beginning those discussions next week to resolve some of these challenging issues that we have before us. We like to do this, as I mentioned before, through a series of workshops. So we see engagement of not only Capital Development Board representatives, administrators on campus, the faculty, the facility staff, students, and we've talked about engaging the alumni as well, and of course, the board, we want to keep the board updated on everything that we're doing. We consider this a very inclusive participation process. We believe in open dialogue. As we establish goals and priorities, we also like to evaluate those concepts and develop budgets, so we don't get ahead of ourselves with an idea that we can't afford to end that everybody loves. So we make sure that we do a lot of budget analysis upfront in order to do that. As we develop this process, this is a very simplified chart. As I mentioned before, we've been doing some of our pre-workshop assessments with lasers scanning the building and gathering background data. We've had our initial kickoff meeting, and our first series of really good workshops will be next week, where we start establishing the goals and priorities by each of the major stakeholders and users within the building. As this process goes on through a series of workshops, we'll develop a comprehensive space program. We'll come up with some initial design concepts, test fits for the building to see if it'll work before we have what we call an approved programmatic document to move forward with, which will include conceptual floor plans, how the building is organized with adjacencies, and a comprehensive budget model as well. One of the big components we try to do is, this process will be evolving initially, if we get off to the right start, we get off in the right direction, so you'll see that we've allocated essentially ten weeks for this first phase, sixteen for the second phase, in order, a total of sixteen weeks are almost four months of time to get the program analysis correct and get the project on track. So you'll see that we have our three workshops identified above, we have a Capital Development Board approval process that goes through schematic design, design development. We'd be out to bidding an award of about eighteen to twenty months for the project to move forward with, and then construction occurring after that. We also know that there is some fundraising that needs to be taken care of on the campus perhaps, and our efforts will support that as we go along as well. The big issue on everybody's mind today is cost estimates, and how do we contain those? And as we've worked around the country with the escalation of construction costs, we always look at it programmatically with a historical database, with adjustments for location and inflation. We track that around the country, and we have a cost estimating specialist on our team just to do that. We break it down by specific divisions, so we're tracking it line by line item. And then also, when we bid the project, we look at a project that's ten percent under the stated budget with ten percent bid alternates in order to bring the project up into, up, add to the project if the bidding climate in the market is aggressive and competitive at that. So, I've gone very quickly through who our team is, our experience, what we know about your building so far in the process we're putting forth. I'm going to let Al talk a little bit about our projects, but I'll stop for just a moment and see if there's any questions I can address now with any of the members present tonight. All right. Hearing no questions, I will continue on and turn the slides over to Al and let him talk a little bit about our experience and some of the relative experience we think is going to be appropriate for your project. Al?
Thank you. I personally have a real fondness for, for old buildings. I live in an old house in Soulard, and I'm pretty aware of the idiosyncrasies that come with that, the, the beauty of the design, and also the challenges of, of living in an old building. So we do have a lot of experience with renovation work. On this slide shows the number of the projects that we did at Fontbonne University. You can see the original before classroom with the exposed conduit, the, the low lighting, the old desks, the chalkboards and things like that. And on the right is the updated classroom with modern technology, whiteboards, computer screens, flexible chairs. You can see perhaps in the middle, there's a partition that comes across that can divide this room into more than one space, or it can be one large open space. The one thing that we hear, I think, most frequently from faculty and from academic, from, from administration, is that they're looking for spaces that are flexible and fluid. They, they don't want static classrooms anymore, so we learned how to create spaces that can be, be flexible and changeable. Lower pictures show the science lab before and after, and you can see how they've been modernized and updated, new finishes, new cabinets, new bright specimens, and the appropriate safety requirements, the snorkels and things there to remove harmful exhausts and things like that, are very much part of that renovation work. Also, in the lobby spaces, you know, usually the corridors are kind of a fixed component. They are only so wide in many old structures, and yours is no different. What happens over time is that ceilings get lowered, new pipes get put in, and things just kind of become dingy and old. And so this is an example where we renovated the, the corridor system, put in new display, upgraded the finishes with lighting, and brought the ceilings up to a level where everything feels more open and, and bright. And on the right side is, again, one of those classrooms that's really multi-functioned, flexible spaces. And this is a, a, a design classroom for, into, for clothing design, and you can see some of the work happening in that classroom. Next, please. We've done a lot of work at the University of Tulsa in Oklahoma, starting with a project that was their McFarland Library. Interesting project, it started out as a very beautiful building with a large front entryway. Over the years, it was added on to a number of times until the main entry for the building was relegated to a side door. And so we came in and created a new, new spaces and improved the renovation, and brought the main entrance back to that spectacular door that was at the front of campus. So these are examples, on the left, some of the existing reading room spaces. Our goal was to renovate these per their kind of original condition and leave them as reading room spaces, because they're so beautiful and so grand. But on the right, this is an example of where that old doorway was. We took out floors, and we took out walls, and put in new staircases, and made the space more open and made the circulation much more clear, so that when people are coming in, they can find the desk, they know where to go, there's views to the outside, so we made the space much more easy to circulate through, because it is a very large space. Next, please. On, this is again still McFarland Library, on the left, the two little wings are actually new computer spaces. There wasn't really a good way to renovate those into the existing, because we'd need all the new technology and flooring, so those are new additions, but it blends with the original building on the right, keeping that collegiate Gothic feel. But you can see that it's, it's subservient, it doesn't overpower or overshadow the existing building, but it does blend, we think, very well. Overall, the concept was to create new circulation spaces between the old on the right and the new on the left, so that you still have the sense of the old facade. And then we put a lot of skylights over those spaces, so that there's a clear definition between what was original and what was new, but they are blended and work well together. Also, University of Tulsa was an old music building called Tarrell Hall. They actually wanted to turn this building into a technology center. It was not ADA accessible, it had very poor technology backbone to it, and had this large music room, which we renovated, put in new seating, upgraded all the finishes, improved the mechanical systems to it. So again, this is an example of a space that was very much of a gem, and we left it and turned it into a music hall. But on the right hand is an example of our modernization of the existing building. We put in elevators, we brought in new technology and new finishes. So we're blending old and new, so that they work together to create functional buildings that are, work with modern pedagogy. At Washington University, we had a new project where we renovated and built a new recreation center. So the towers in the, at the front here are existing, and that's about the only portion that was kept of the new recreation center, and the two wings on the right and left are all new. And we kept that original tower, because it was historic and was significant entry. And you can see the renovated spaces on the right-hand photograph. Tall, beautiful, kind of collegiate Gothic spaces with new furnishing, new furnitures, and new, again, new technology added to the facility. One of the things we've heard a lot in, we've experienced walking through your building, is the need for clear wayfinding. So these two images are both examples of what we try to do in buildings, where we do a number of different things. First of all, making spaces that, that show, in this case, digital wayfinding. We're also showing branding, we're showing in the back, you can see there's opportunities for donor recognition. The monitors on either side of that flank are showing current events and letting people know what's happening. The right-hand photograph is Millikan College up in north in Illinois, and you can see the, the control desk, and again, the screens, the technology, and just trying to make things as open and as transparent as possible, so that when you're a newcomer, an arrival onto campus, you can find easily where to go and ask for help, and then be directed to places around campus, around the building that can offer you more detailed support. So these are some examples of those kinds of spaces. Again, another information desk, this is University of Alabama, where it's clear where to go. These people in the green t-shirts are here to help you and direct you onto other places. A lot of times, we see in these kinds of spaces, a place for refreshment. This one happens to have a Starbucks in it, so there's opportunity to bring in a coffee bar or bring in a beverage counter, so that people not only just come and move on, but they might linger and want to have a small retail experience where they can get a cup of, of coffee before they move on, or while they're waiting for someone as a visitor, or as waiting for somebody to see them in one of the different support spaces. Classrooms, again, just getting back to the idea of flexibility. You can see in this classroom, there is a folding partition that opens this, double, basically doubles the size of this room, and the technology upgrades that have been incorporated in it. The classroom on the right, I think, is really what we see a lot of these days, kind of moving away from the typical just single rectangular table to different shaped furniture, all on wheels, everything that can be moved around, so that the classroom can be facing toward lecture style, that can be put together in groups, so that there's just a whole variety of ways that kids can work together and have that different teaching models. Again, you can see the technology in the background, whiteboards, computers, even paper space, just a lot of different varieties of functionality. These are examples, again, this is from Millikin's campus. On the left-hand side is a classroom that was designed with folding partitions, so that during the day, these, these partitions can be closed, and this room can be used as a classroom space, and the sound, the room can be isolated from sound. At night, when there aren't classes, those partitions can be opened, and students can wander in here for a meeting, or for some breakout space, or collaboration, or maybe for a, another kind of just gathering together and utilize the classroom spaces, not just during the daytime, but all throughout the evening hours as well. On the right-hand side, we've seen a lot of these maker spaces, modeling spaces, where there are a variety of technology printers, mat boards, storage, whiteboards, where kids can come in and, and do a lot of kind of experiential learning and have a variety of technologies at their disposal, so they can do a lot of different tasks in one room. We've also done a few of these flexible and scale classrooms. This is one very large classroom that can be divided into four different partitions, and you can see where the partitions are kind of at the ceiling. Again, lots of technology, all the chairs are on rollers, the tables move around. So this can be four classrooms, this can be one very large classroom, and the technology, the screw, the screens allow that support to occur, no matter what the, the scale of the classroom is. Storage bins, just a variety of different ways that this space can be used and broken down into smaller, more intimate spaces. One of the other things that we've done in a lot of our classroom buildings is to create as much transparency as possible. So as you're moving through spaces, you can see the activities going on. These are kind of seminar, small classroom spaces, breakout spaces. There's a lot of glass on the, on the right-hand image, it's almost hard to see, it's so, so thin because of the million less technology. But as you're working through, as you're walking through the classroom, you can just see all the activity, and I think that just brings a lot of excitement and activity to the learning experience and to people that are going through, understanding that, hey, there's something that I might be interested. I can see that there's something that I might like to join, a group that I might like to participate with. Again, speaking of our variety of spaces, on the left-hand side is an image of a veterans administration support space. We've done a few of these spaces, that's part of, I think, your, your student body. And on the right, again, a support space showing smaller scale, lots of different, you know, kind of tutoring scale, places where people can get extra help if they need to have that kind of help. And then social spaces are also very important. We can see on the photograph on the left, a variety of spaces and, and a lot of, a variety of different seating arrangements, tables and chairs where students can get together and maybe do some work and collaborate on projects, as well as soft seating, more lounge-like seating, where places, people can just socialize and talk and get to know each other. So that variety is, is very important. Again, you see transparency, the glass on the left, and on the right, gaming spaces, foosball, and different spaces where kids can meet between classes and blow off some, some energy, and again, socialize, and that becomes also part of their educational experience. Also, again, that, that campus, that, that campus pedagogy, the bookstore, and the, the food service are all part of the campus experience. We've done a number of these, and you know, these have changed a lot over the years. There, there's less buying of books, but there is more buying of different sundries and things, snacks and things like that, that I might need, and mostly books are online, but there's still a need for these kinds of facilities throughout campus. And then another thing that we've, we've seen a lot of more, may probably more an uptake is support for technology, and that, that can morph into retail for technology, buying laptops, buying phones. I'm not sure if that's something that, that is appropriate for your campus, but you, you need to have that place where people can get that support, especially for maybe second or older students, where they can get that, get that help that they need for technology support. And then finally, as, as Chris mentioned, these are some of the digital images that were created from our, our digital cameras we've come on campus. It's really pretty fascinating and interesting. Gone are the days where, you know, you're spending hours and hours with a tape measure and looking at spaces, and now it's done by setting up a camera that takes a bunch of laser images and records everything with a series, not only of plans, but also of photographs. It, through computer technology, it stitches all the images together, so that in a short period of time, you have the existing conditions on campus that we can use as a template to work from. It's very interesting technology, we're excited to use it on your facility.
And with? With that, we'd love to open it up for any questions or comments that you have about our process or the spaces we've shown or the projects we've completed.
Aren't any questions, but we truly appreciate your time.
Okay.
Maybe there is one question.
I don't know, I don't, I don't know how this works here, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, yeah, I was just, I was curious. Do you actually, or how, how do you get a feel for the, the flow of students and the timing of things and how spaces are, are utilized? Of course, maybe that is, maybe that's not really possible now, because some of our spaces are kind of, kind of non-utilized right now to some extent. But I mean, do you actually do that, or do you rely on the, on the, the, the comp, main complex team, mover team to give you that information?
We're going to let the mover team kind of inform us initially about those conversations, about how the students are moving across campus and using these spaces. And then we'll actually come to campus and do observations of students and how they're moving throughout the day. So that helps us actually understand more importantly about how things, how, how, how the campus is being utilized. You know, your complex right now is being terribly underutilized because of its age and its conditions. But as we start thinking about the renovation, we know we're going to change the movement patterns on campus, the whole even admissions and enrollment opportunity, or a one-stop shop for students to come here and look for academic support, look for financial aid, things like that, we've been discussing. So we will actually come and do that, and then we'll bring our own experience from other campuses of what we've seen has been successful as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, this is Julie Johnson, the chairman. Did you have anything else you'd like to say?
No, just thank you very much, and I apologize for my hoarseness tonight, and I appreciate you letting us connect by, by And I appreciate you letting us connect by, by virtual meeting tonight. Look forward to seeing everybody in person in a couple of months, maybe, okay?
Yes, thank you, it's very exciting. And yeah, I'm looking forward to it also. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a great day. Take care.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so next we'll have our budget health and enrollment update.
Sure, so I'll do the budget health update quickly here. And then Dr. Jackson will provide some enrollment updates for us. So our corporate personal property replacement tax is trending higher again this year. We increased our budget in fiscal year 23, and it appears that we are going to have another high year of the CPR RT revenues. While this is great news, we do have concern that revenues at this level are not sustainable and are expected to decline back to normal levels in future years. We are projecting less than budgeted amounts of tax revenue since it was determined that we would forego levying for that special tax authorization earlier, or I should say late, later last year. A lesser amount expected to be received in 23 is reflected in the projections included as part of tonight's board materials. Since tuition revenue is up slightly in November 22 as compared to 21, we are projecting an increased amount of tuition revenue as compared to last year. And just a final note is that projected expenses are remaining consistent, that they were projected last month. So we're on track there as well with mindful spending continuing. And it is still expected that our operating expenses are back on track overall within the budget year fiscal year 23. So everything continues to look good. And I just want to thank the team again for their awareness and mindful budget management. Thank you. Dr. Jackson.
Good evening, just a quick enrollment update. We continue to focus on non-traditional enrollment and open enrollment appointments this week and going into next week. So currently our head count, we are down fourteen point, fourteen point four percent. However, total credit hours is up one point three percent. So we are experiencing lower head count. However, we are making up with that in credit hours, which is really what is creating the revenue for us. We have seen year over year, when we look at our enrollment times, high enrollment times unfortunately is the last few weeks of enrollment. So we have seen an uptick in walk-in appointments for this week. And we continue to see appointments being scheduled for next week as well. So we do anticipate that we will continue to see a higher enrollment increase. Currently, I know there were some questions about the partnership with District Seven as well. So that is more an academic focus now with concurrent enrollment. So we continue to work with District Seven and getting new programs and partnerships with our in-house programs with those departments as well. We should also start seeing the impact of that increased enrollment for that concurrent enrollment program, starting in the fall semester when they have that first semester completed. And we continue to enroll, I believe, the first opportunity when they presented it for students to show interest. I believe we had around 58 students. And there are other districts that are looking to partner with us as well. So we see that is definitely an increase in revenue and enrollment for the institution. Any questions?
Have we received an enrollment report regarding the spring semester yet?
This is starting for the spring semester, starting for January. So this is the students that are currently enrolled now that will start next week on the 17th.
So I'm, we're going to get a report on the 17th?
No, so that, the enrollment update, what additional information would you like to hear from spring?
I'm only familiar with one enrollment report that we received.
Right, so that's the total credit hours, we are up one point three percent for our spring enrollment.
Yeah, so let me, so the, so enrollment continues through next week for the spring. Even though the semester starts on the 17th, we have enrollment, students can still enroll up to Friday. So probably the week after that, we'll have sort of a final number to compare spring to spring.
It's like that, doesn't look like that, like the 10th day or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. We have a 10th day reporting date and that essentially is after the ad drop time period. So it gives us kind of a, a solid number to compare. Okay, thanks, thanks, Reese.
Okay, the omnibus agenda is presented for a vote. Is there any item that the board would like to be with, be held out and voted separately? Okay, if not, then I'll take a motion to approve the omnibus agenda.
Motion.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, call the roll. Barker?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder? Trent?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. We'll move on to action items.
So on the action items, Dr. Artis is, is open to coming up for A. And then B, we do have some updated numbers. We've been keeping track of the cost for the improvement. So we can start with A. And if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those regarding to the action.
Okay, do I have a first or second? First and second?
I'll make them up. Second.
Did you get that, Sue? Okay, any discussion? Okay, vote, call for the vote. Barker?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder. Okay, motion carried. Moving on, do I have a motion to affirm contractual engagement of service providers and purchases in response to the main complex water, electrical and environmental emergencies in December 22 and to ratify and approve the related scope of the work agreements?
Second.
Okay, we have any discussion?
So again, on this one, this is the one that I discussed with all of you. I believe in my check-ins due to the nature of the repairs and, you know, oftentimes not being able to wait to have board approval. This is just allowing myself as president to make those decisions internally. The good news is that following our deductible, these, these repairs and improvements will be covered through insurance.
Okay, let's call for the vote. Barker?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder? Trent?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Do I have a motion to approve the faculty seniority list?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, call for the vote. Barker?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder? Trent?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. All right, and we'll, we'll skip item D. There's no policy presented for approval regarding student debt assistance. Okay, we'll move on to informational items. And we're going to rearrange the order a little bit and move H up to the first before A there.
Correct, thanks. So I think Maya, yep. And then as Maya's coming up, we do, we'll have Lori come up for D on recognition report. Sue will provide a little bit of an update if there's questions on E. And then Brett Reiner is here to provide an update on F. And then of course, Maria will come up if there's any questions on the audit. So Maya, it's all you.
All right, good evening. Just some updates, some DEI updates overall. So starting last fall, we started our reconnect summit. We've been working with human to human. The founder is Anya Covington. She's been kind of helping us to rebuild and recommit to the, to Lewis and Clark overall as having, you know, one mindset, working together, things like that. So that has been going exceptionally well. Our last session is this Friday, Friday the 13th. And that will be the end of phase one of our reconnect summits. In addition, I have been working on the DEI blueprint, which is a part of the, the job description. So basically it's to help facilitate and guide DEI on campus to make sure that we're integrating it in basically our day-to-day operations. This has been in the works for about the last six to seven months. You all received the first draft of it, I believe, in September. Since the September draft, it has changed. And we were able to get feedback from the leadership team and some members of the Lewis and Clark Faculty Association and also legal for some suggested edits and necessary changes. So that has happened. In addition, we've been meeting with different board members if they are interested in meeting like two-on-ones to have any further conversations about the blueprint. The blueprint has five goals. Each goal has aspirations. There are three aspirations. And then there are actions to meet the aspirations. There are also DEI statements. So those statements are a diversity statement, an updated diversity, equity and inclusive statement for our syllabi. They are, it's already one in there, but it's an updated and edited one. There's an equity statement, an inclusive excellence statement, an anti-racism statement, and a land acknowledgement. Land acknowledgement overall is to recognize, show respect and honor indigenous peoples who are the original source of the land that we inhabit. So it's just a statement of recognition. And so that's in there as well. And then there is a DEI and anti-racism policy as part of the blueprint as well. So within the five objectives, they all align with the key directions from our strategic plan to make sure that everything we're doing is kind of going hand in hand. And so the goals for the, for the blueprint is to have smart objectives and goals. So specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and time-sensitive with the objective of being able to meet those goals in a timely manner, but also in the same timeframe of our strategic plan. So everything has kind of synced up with the same timeframe. Right now, we're in the finalizing stages of the document. Ideally, hopefully, we'll be able to bring this to the board in the next couple of months for, you know, so you all can vote on it and it can be a board-approved document with board-approved policy. And go from there to kind of help build the foundation of DEI at Lewis and Clark. Because right now, we don't really have anything like that here. And for how we're trying to move forward, it's extremely important that, not only for the Lewis and Clark community, but for the community at large that they, we are showing that that's where we're headed. So this is the kind of first step to make that happen. Do you all have any questions?
I would also note that following some feedback sessions with board members, we have run the body of policies that are part of the blueprint through legal. And I believe we have a meeting coming up with Frank in a week or so.
Yes, in about a week.
So, yeah. No questions?
Any questions or feedback?
Thanks for all of your work on this.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right.
All right, the, the fun part of my job is getting to give you guys the recognition report each month. And, and I'm sure you've read through it and probably have it framed and hanging on your fridge. But just some quick highlights. Melanie Reeve, who is our Division Assistant in Liberal Arts Business and IT, was recognized by a faculty member. That story was shared there. But just in summary, she was notified that the faculty member of the week of finals was out with COVID. And she took it upon herself to work with the students, make sure all the tests were proctored. She also got a test from the clinic and got it to the faculty member, gathered all the test materials, was able to get it to the faculty member. And because of her efforts, our students were able to get their grades on time. So we want to recognize Melanie. And we have a number of people in the room tonight that I really want to recognize. And I know you guys are so sick of hearing about Cody Zipman. But I, you know, once again, I just, our maintenance team and our security team over this holiday break, I, I just can't say enough. Never once did I have a complaint. We were out here Christmas night. Mickey and Brad spent the night on Christmas night after being out here and leaving their families during the day because somebody had to literally just watch the electrical distribution panel to make sure there wasn't any arcing overnight because of all the moisture in the room. But Corey Zipman is here. If you haven't met Corey, I know you guys all know Pantone 286 over here, Cody Zipman. But Corey and Cody and Wolf Averka, who is our manager of facilities, spent nearly every day on this campus over this break. We knew the cold was coming. We know what the main complex does in these cold temperatures. We had Brad Mayer, who's our building control specialist, monitoring everything remotely, alerting this team. They were checking offices and classrooms and addressing things as they went. And then low and behold, Christmas Day brought. I kept saying, we just can't get a break. But we apparently had 12 breaks in our sprinkler system. So I really just can't say enough about our team. I mean, they continue to put the college first and I really want the board to notice that. I didn't mention in my report, but Chris Paldah and Kimberly Kleinschmidt and our campus operations, they were out here the next day already working on getting everything ready for our insurance claim that's underway. Every member of maintenance had a role in helping move equipment and helping Dennis Crebe. Dennis Crebe was also here on Christmas Day to assess his library and, and Ron Wall in IT. Dr. Traska was here on Christmas. And I know Dwight and Jill, I got texts from both of you guys. You guys were trying to find us generators. So I really just, it was a huge team effort. And I just want to thank everyone who helped us kind of work through this problem. We're probably looking at a few months, you know, as we work through the repairs, we've got to get some ceiling tiles done as well as new flooring and get everything moved. But I want to thank our maintenance and security team for just putting in the hours and the effort and making sure our students weren't disrupted throughout this whole process. So, thank you.
Madam?
Yeah.
I would like to say something. I was remiss, I wanted to tell Maya that you all have done an outstanding job with the DEI and all the work that went into it, even with the questions that you received. You did an outstanding job with that, and I want to commend you all on that.
And to follow on Lori's too, I, my heart was breaking knowing that Dr. Traska was texting me, guess what's going on, you know? And I just hated that everybody had to be here. But I'm so thankful that you guys are dedicated employees and that you were here and you did a great job. And I appreciate it very much, Dr. Traska also. So anybody who had to take off from their families and come here, I really appreciate that.
I think it's a testament to your character and it speaks volumes to your dedication to this place. And so while I'm sorry you were away from your families on Christmas, sincere appreciation for what you did and how you, how you handled this crisis. So thank you. Maya, also want to thank you as well. Brenda brings to light, I spent quite a bit of time with you last week on the DEI blueprint. And you handle yourself with a lot of grace and a lot of wisdom. And I can't think of anyone else better to lead this work than you. So thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll move forward to E, which is the teaching and engagement model. Again, this is a, a component of our agreement with the faculty. So we promised some updates on that. So Dr. Swinski is going to come up and just give a brief update on where we're at with the model and the progress that we're making.
Good evening. Little taller, little taller. Sorry, I have heels, maybe that's it. So we have about nine. Sorry. I have heels. Maybe that's it. So we have about nine faculty members right now involved in TEM. We're excited. We're all getting up to speed. We spent most of fall trying to figure out what projects people wanted to work on, how they were going to address it, and how we would all move forward. Now we're in a lot better place where some of those projects are underway. We have an instructional designer on the team. So that should move us ahead a lot faster than us trying to kind of muddle through it. So I think, you know, this is really an exciting time. We know that to keep relevant, we need to transform. We can't keep doing the same thing and expect, you know, the same outcome. So, so I think everybody is excited. There's different levels of how in the faculty are. So there's some that are, you know, wanting to expand their programs. Some want to do, just try a little bit of something and see how that goes. And then there's ones that are just diving straight in and want to revamp their whole curriculum. So it'll be really fun to see how this all evolves over the next year.
Are, are you able to tell me who they are? Or even just like what discipline or?
Sure. So, so CBE Development. We started with welding. We have a bunch of the, several of the Gen Eds jumping in. So we have Jen Fuller, who's our champion of CBE. And she's in English. But we have math jumping in. I think we have a history wanting to, to start to evolve classes. So IT is our next big project. And that's where we have this instructional designer that I think can kind of put a fire under all of us, not just the faculty, under all of us and get us moving in the right direction. Jen Fuller and I are actually taking a trip to Salt Lake City Community College at the end of the month to ask them all kinds of questions and really be feet on the ground and watching their production and how they do things, how they charge students, how they pay faculty, how they schedule these classes, how it really rolls out, you know? And they're successful. And so we have a small grant and we're able to use that grant money to go out and travel and, and bring back a lot of information. Again, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. We want to see what's working, how it's working, and then bring it back here and make it work even better. So, yeah. And then, I'm trying to think. So radio broadcasting, we're looking at new certificates and how to kind of make smaller chunks. So students that are just interested in becoming masters at podcasts, just to try to pick up those things. And podcasting could be labeled layered on, you know, a health science degree or any degree. And so that's another, another area. Another area is tapping into non-traditional students. So criminal justice is going out into all the, the police departments because now they're kind of, they're doing that kind of degree creep. Before, you didn't need an associate's degree. Now you need an associate's degree and they're tipping towards bachelor's degree. So encouraging some of those officers that are, that are in the field to come and start to work on their degrees as well. So there's a variety of different options. And then we have some people kind of on the sidelines watching to see how TEM goes, you know? And I think next, I think next year when we start this, we'll have more people that, you know, that see that the excitement and how to balance their classroom, right, and these new projects.
So do you see like maybe doubling the amount next semester or?
I don't know if, I, I don't know if I would say doubling, but I bet another 50%. So I think we could be in the 12 to 15 range next semester. Because I think, you know, it's hard to be a first adopter because it's an MOU. It's all new. Plus was this came in, they already had loads for this, you know, for the fall semester. So they were trying to figure out, how am I going to teach this load and start something brand new? Now I think they have the luxury of planning ahead, maybe taking the less of a load and then starting a new project. Yeah. And to be honest, I have a better idea of what we're doing. So I can be a lot more supportive than, you know, than coming in and I was still, you know, dean. We didn't have a VP. So, you know, now that we're starting to get people in places, I think, I think we can have a much stronger transformation team.
Where, where's your consultant from? Are they remote or are they?
He's remote, but he's going to come on campus several times to meet with the team. We're going to meet monthly as a whole TEM team so that everybody can share both their successes and their struggles so that we can all kind of learn from each other and build a better team. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Brett?
Good evening. Happy to be here to provide you with this update on the strategic plan. Just have about 10 pages of notes and eight or 10 slides and we'll be right here. Actually, just a very brief one-page summary here. As you know, in the past, the last time I provided an update, I was reporting to you that we had transitions in roles and that was impacting the leads in our KDs. Once again, we've had some additional transitions to report. So at this time, KD1 is currently being led by the newly appointed Dr. Sharice Jackson and Dr. Lori Artis. KD2 is being led by the newly appointed Dr. Suzie Winski and newly appointed Dean Randy Gallagher. KD3 is still being led by Debbie Whitkin, but we've added the, the ever-present Cody Zipman. The, the guy. I, I kind of want to hang around in his shadow, I think. And then KD4 is currently being led by Dr. Val Harris. Since, you know, we started this plan, we have been, been meeting regularly to develop plans for measurable outcomes associated with each one of the key directions in this plan. And in November, we met the last time and were able to firmly solidify some of these plans into these outcomes. Just briefly, KD1 continues to be measured against the ultimate goal of 55,000 credit hours for the current year. KD2 anticipates tracking transfer agreements and participation in a curricular innovation team. KD3 will be looking at tracking participation in a number of events along with benchmarking results from our recently launched Campus Climate Survey. So the initial launch is now. We were, we're seeking actively input now. So a year from now, we'll have results to compare on whether or not improvement has actually happened. KD4 then will look to track number and hours of participants in service opportunities throughout the year along with collaborations. In fact, they're currently conducting an inventory of existing collaborations to try and define what the criteria is for that and how we can more effectively manage those moving forward. We are also working with the Finance Department to set up tracking for expenses associated with all of these activities. And at this time, we're recording about $225,000 in encumbrances and expenses on a $300,000 budget. Over the year, we have, we've purchased with these funds, for instance, an engagement to improve CRM recruit associated with KD1. We supported hiking through the holidays under KD3. And we've also funded the Reconnect Summit under KD4. So those are a taste, an example of things that we've been doing while, associated with the strategic plan. And that's my summary. If you have questions, I'd be happy to address them.
There was a purchase that we approved related to you, right, that were going to allow us to collect data? I can't remember the words.
The, the Dashboard Development piece? Yeah, those are two, two independent pieces. What we've done, the tact that we're approaching, we're taking on that is to actually improve existing pieces of software. We looked at a couple of outside pieces of software. And I'm just going to tell you, it's, this is very expensive work. So the most, the most reasonable approach, we thought, to take advantage of the software that we have in place right now. So we're extending some licenses on our Intrinsic Informer reporting tool. And what that does is kind of automatically takes, it takes the, the reports that we currently have generated through that system and converts them to a dashboard system, makes them available through a dashboard-type system. So that's, that's one component of it. The second component is to make improvements to our Blackboard Analytics piece. That's our data warehouse. And so far, we've only ever used that for tracking academic data. And so what we were literally physically doing is taking data out of our colleague, our administrative management system, and pushing it over. And it creates a warehouse, accumulation of data over multiple years. And that's only ever tracked academic data. What this engagement with our consulting supporting firm is going to do is to add finance and HR data to the data that's being pushed over. So it will now start being and over time accumulating data over all of those areas, which will allow us to make comparisons and contrasts with all three pieces of data in one location. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Was that a one-time cost or is that annual?
Right now, these, the, the license for Intrinsic Informer is a one-time cost to acquire, but will increase our overall renewal for support for like $3,000 if I remember somewhere around there. Don't quote me on that. The engagement to improve Blackboard Analytics is a consulting engagement. These are 162 consulting hours only. There's no additional costs anticipated at this point.
Yeah, it just caused me to think, you know, well, it's nice to track all this and keep track of all that. But if it's going to cost a big bunch of money. So we just have to keep that in mind. I, I think it's worth it so far, but
Yeah.
Something to keep in mind, you know? I'm sure you all.
Yeah, I think, you know, in hindsight, it would be easy to look back and say, wow, I wish we would have moved finance and HR data into our data warehouse 10 years ago when we set it up, right? But now, there's no reason, there's no, no time like the present to start. We, there's no reason not to do it now. Absolutely.
And I would add, I'm extremely excited about this. So thank you, Brett.
You're welcome.
Yeah, this is, this is right up your alley, Doug. Thank you, Brett.
All right. Thank you.
I can make a quick comment on G. This is the physical or financial hardship policy that's required by the Student Debt Assurance Act. That's currently in its final phases of being reviewed by Matt Gardner. And we hope to have that done. Actually, probably in the week or so, we'll have that on the board agenda for next month. We will, you know, per our process, of course, run that through the board prior as a policy, but just wanted to make you aware of that. And I don't know if Mary, if you want to come up and give a real quick Reader's Digest version on the audit. I know on most of this the board has been communicated to regarding a lot of these things, including the audit, but wanted to give Mary the opportunity to see if there's any questions or just provide a bit of an update of where we're at at this point.
Sure. When I was asked to provide an update, my response was, I have no update beyond what was communicated on the 27th because as of today, I still have not heard from them. It was very disappointing to receive that email on the 27th. I was talking to them on the 22nd, still, trying to get what they needed. We were shooting files to them as quickly as we could. Like I said, I was really shocked and disappointed. And then even more disappointed when I realized that it sounds like we might be the only school for which they missed a deadline. So I really don't have an update to give other than I'm waiting for them to reach out to me. And I have not heard anything yet.
And, and the deadline was when?
We had to have it filed with ICCB on the 30th of December. And that's the audit itself, the deadline, of course. But we also have a few reports that are due on the 30th of December for which that is the source of information. Uniform Financial Statements that we file is the first one that comes to mind. There were a few. We, we were able to wing it on our own numbers. We'll refile if we need to.
And the deadline to follow for an extension was?
November 15th.
November 15th. So we missed the deadline.
We missed the deadline, yes.
And?
We missed the deadline. And actually, the first time that the senior members of the team talked to me at all was on November 28th. And they asked for a meeting. And so we started meeting weekly because we have a deadline to meet here. And, you know, explain to them we would be gone, but we will be giving you every bit of information we can. So they under, their comment was, so we need to ask for everything we need by December 16th. It's like, yes, knowing full well, we responded, would respond to them and did. So I'm not sure exactly where it fell apart.
But we have never been late on an audit.
One other time. And I believe that was when we converted to colleague back in 2006. But whichever year it was, it was the fixed assets piece that held us up that year. No, we have never been late. No, this is not anything that's okay with me. Are there any other questions?
Mike, just keep us informed.
Whitley does, Whitley or whatever, however you pronounce, they, they do a lot of community college audits.
They do.
Why do you think that we're the only one that's, you think, are you for sure that we're the only one that's?
I asked if we were going to be the only ones. I, the response was that there were three schools for which they had not completed the audit. One had requested an extension. The second one, they thought they could finish. And then there's Lewis and Clark.
So Mary, the only reason we didn't request an extension was because we didn't even know they weren't going to be done on time. Is that, is that what I read?
Yes. I, I had no reason to think we wouldn't be finished on time.
They didn't reach out to you or anything and let you know?
No. Sarah says she wasn't aware there, there even was a deadline for an extension until this year because supposedly they've never needed to, they've never missed their deadlines before.
So they're going to be here in February to face the music, though?
I hope they have an audit by then. I had asked her if, of course, when we wouldn't have it by December 30th, if she would still be here to present tonight. And she said she wasn't comfortable committing to that, which I understood. I don't, at this point, get it done.
I have a major concern with this. This is just unbelievable to me.
What, what are the consequences for the audit being late?
Excuse me. What firm is this?
The firm is Whitley.
And we, what is their experience? Do we know their background?
They do do a lot of community colleges in the state of Illinois. They do a large number. That was one of the reasons that actually out of those that had submitted a proposal, I was most interested in this because I felt like we'd get the most experience, the most familiarity, that it would actually go better. It was a very different experience in that the people, I'm used to seeing the partner onsite
Sure.
Once in a while. We had a handful of...
So you saw red flags in the beginning?
I wanted to give it a fair, a fair shot.
I understand what you're saying, but, you know.
Everybody does business differently. Okay, if this is how we're going to do this, then, then that's fine if it works. But I didn't have a report on December 30th.
But you meet deadlines. They know what they're supposed to do. They know when reports are needed. You know, I've worked with auditors for years. They take care of all of that. This is just, you know, unbelievable to me.
If we had a report due, and particularly a report due to another organization so that they could file a report on time, it would be finished.
If you go back to November 9th of last year, it was proposed that we should rotate auditing firms. At that time, I presented documentation from agencies who said this was a bad idea. United States General Accounting Office surveyed 1,000 public companies and audit committees, and 89% of them said that was a bad idea. The knowledge of business and familiarity of employees, strength and weaknesses are important components of audit quality. Rotation applies less in-depth business knowledge and superficial relationships that could in fact reduce audit quality and increase the risk of overlooking an issue of being manipulated by management. Center for Audit Quality...
Are you about through making, taking shots at me and Julie Dwork?
What are you talking about?
You know exactly what I'm talking about. You want to take any more shots? I think you're done taking shots, aren't you?
I think I've got the floor. I have the floor here.
Let him talk. Let him talk.
The Illinois CPA, or the Senator Audit Quality, mandatory firm rotation is not a concept of work to improve audit quality and in fact is fought with significant issues and unintended consequences. Long story short, we went outside, we got a company that was not local, did not support the community, didn't pay taxes here. And the unintended consequences is the fact that now we don't have an audit. It's not done. I think this is a textbook example of what these people were talking about. And if you're offended that this, that we're upset about it, I'm just saying, we should not be doing business with this company. It's a three-year contract. I understand that we can decouple after the first year. It's a three-year contract, we understand, and we can decouple after the first year. And I think that we should really look at decoupling from this outfit and going back and supporting the local community who pays, who pays taxes and supports the college. We've never been late and we still don't know when we're going to have an audit.
I don't, and I will share with you that on the CFO call or Zoom meeting, since the pandemic, the CFOs at the community colleges has been meeting monthly on Zoom, just to talk about the various topics and concerns. And actually, another school brought up the situation with their audit and some missed deadlines. They were also a client of Whitley. The reason that came out was because another school was going out for bid for auditing firms and they received one response. So the first school I mentioned was wanting to go out to move away from Whitley potentially, but was disheartened by the fact that there are so few responses apparently out there right now. Doesn't, doesn't sound good all around.
Was there a reason why we abandoned the previous auditor? Was there issues with it? Were we, I mean, whoever had it?
Set the request to the board.
Yeah, I can answer that. I have an auditing background and I, I was in favor of switching auditors because I felt it's good to switch, switch them up because you have new people who come in, see things differently. That's assuming that, you know, you can find a firm that's going to do their job, you know? And this firm had an adequate reputation, so I didn't have a problem with switching. But I think it's good sometimes to, and there are a lot of organizations that do that. You can, you can find just as many articles about why it's good to switch auditors as you can, you know, that's bad to switch auditors. So you could go either way on that. And I think, I think we voted, the board was probably, we weren't unanimous on that decision, right? Yeah. So we had some concerns with it, but I, I felt good about it because I just think it's important to have a new set of eyes to come in there and, you know, take a look at things. But obviously, nobody wants this to happen, so.
And I do feel, you know, from, from that, from that regard, there were positives and negatives to that. I do, I feel very positive about the fact that at this point, I've still only been told there's one audit finding and that's related to filing of a grant report. That's not what I expected with switching to new auditors, you know, that because there's different eyes in different ways. And, and Sarah's email, and this is maybe, it's a reason, but it also bothers me, is they wanted our report to look like many of their other colleges' reports, not all of them. My two cents, what that meant for me and what I saw in the activity, is they were auditing more than just this year. Because they were wanting to get information from years and years ago. And for instance, I'll just say, I was asked for the closing memos for every bond issue. I don't know that I could even find the closing memos from some of those bond issues. I had to find every bond transcript and send that to them. Now, those are binders, some of those are quite, did someone sit and read those or was I spending my time so we could check a box in the software that shows it was completed? I went to Dr. Trasker, I just, I mentioned to him at one time, I was asked a question about the individuals during the audit. They came in and, and, you know, some, some were easier to work with than others. We all have our personalities and, and he'd come in and he said that this transaction was in the wrong place. And I said, I, I don't, I don't understand. He said, well, you need to reclassify it somewhere else. And I said, where, where do you want me to reclassify it to? Well, just somewhere else, I said, but that is where it goes. And I pulled the financial management manual off the shelf and copied that page. So I had another strange question about the due tos, claims on cash accounts. So while the people were very, very nice, very friendly and, and, you know, and I'm not, there were, there was also evidence of inexperience. So it's not like we had the most experienced people. They're here collecting information, checking a box, putting it in file. And I think the real work began, again, my opinion, at a later time when different individuals started getting involved. And then they explained to me, there's, I guess Mario, which I know Julie, you, did some kind of preparation of the report, then Josh looks at it, then Sarah looks at it, and then there's a partner that looks at it, and then there's the quality review team. And I think that's what, in the end, we got backed against all of those reviews. And Sarah, I believe, also made reference to, they were looking at the newer clients even harder because those were often chosen for audit review. So did this little mark on our record come at the expense of, of what? You know, and is it a big deal? Kevin, you asked, what's the repercussion? It'll be something that will be on our recognition review and we will be reminded that the files and the reports are supposed to be filed timely. Will we lose money for it? No. Not everything is about the money, though, either, because we worked very hard to get it to the point it was, to get, to have the result we did. So are there any other questions?
Dr. Trasker, did you, did you call the partner? Have you talked?
No, I have not, no, not yet.
Yeah, it might be worth doing.
Yeah, it's on, yeah. You know, and I'll say this too, I mean, I know this goes without saying, but, but whether it's stuff that happened over the holiday break or working through the audit, you know, admittedly, you know, a lot of us leave here pretty late on most nights and I've been guilty of leaving really late. And the cars that are always still in the parking lot are Mary's team. And they put in so much, so much time and effort and energy. So, you know, this is unfortunate, but we can't lose sight of the amount of time and effort that goes in for Mary's team. And, and for that matter, lots and lots of teams on campus, but when it comes down to this stuff, I mean, this is our bread and butter and this has to be done right. So, I mean, I, I just probably don't say it enough, but I really appreciate your team, Mary. And I know that this, being with a new auditor, has taken additional time and energy and mental stamina of your team. So I think we'll get through this, but unfortunately, our recognition report that comes from ICCB will have probably just a, you know, little pink flag, you know, hey, remember? Next year, you know, let's get this right. So we'll have to make those decisions and that's, of course, the board's pleasure, so.
Sarah's looking forward to next year. I, I, I'm not yet.
And hopefully we'll get a big discount.
Okay, here, here, since you mentioned that, I'd forgotten about this. So we come back to campus and open the mail. I have a bill from Whitley.
Yeah, I should hold on to that.
Drop the mic. Thank you, thank you, Mary. Thanks, everyone. So my, my report will be pretty quick, just three things. So today, we kicked off with our in-service, thought it was great, heard feedback, the best one team has been at in a long time, so I'm really proud of that. Just appreciate our keynote speaker, Anye, and just everyone being there. You know, the goal is to get that room packed next year. So we're trying to shift to where it's not just one, you know, one group, but it's the whole team, so our faculty or non-faculty. So that happened today, so really excited. Dr. Jackson talked a little bit about the enrollment piece. There's a lot of great work happening in the enrollment center right now, lots of traffic, lots of energy, and appreciate her team putting in those extra hours and being sure that we're serving all of our prospective students and current students. Next week, Thursday, leadership team meets for the first time this year. We'll begin our journey for this semester, beginning to talk about budget. We'll be digging into the HLC. Dennis Krebs is going to join us for about an hour. That's also going to be happening with the board, so we'll be sure that the board gets the draft version of that reaffirmation report and then, of course, the final version around toward probably the end of February and then March 6th, we have to send that, that in. So things, things are moving, moving in a good direction already this semester. Of course, our students will be back on campus next Tuesday and we'll begin sort of, you know, the work of this semester and continuing to move forward. The board can expect kind of a final board engagement calendar. This is something I sent late last semester as kind of a preview that kind of gives you all a heads up of here are sort of the major events that'll be happening in the spring. A big part of that was revolved around our budget planning process to make sure that you all have the ability to see sort of what we're looking at as priorities as a leadership team and a campus team. I reminded the campus today that to work through your respective leadership, if you have a particular, you know, priority or if you're leading a program that you really feel needs more investment, we need to know about these things because you have your finger on the pulse of those programs better than any of us do. So we want to be able to be sure that, that everything is on the list and being considered and being prioritized as we move forward. And then I know it was already said, but I do want to thank, you know, the team that showed up, you know, over the holiday. I know that, that, that's a huge commitment and I just personally appreciate, you know, everyone stepping up and doing whatever it took to make, to make us get through that, that experience. So that's it. And thank you again for the support and I wish everyone a great 2023.
Dr. Trasker, was there a retreat date on the calendar that you sent us, the engagement calendar? Or has that been finalized, I guess?
No, it hasn't been finalized, but we're thinking about a board retreat probably in the April timeframe. And Sue and I just talked about this yesterday related to HLC, but probably sometime in mid-March. Won't be a retreat, but it will be an opportunity to have, I don't know if we'd call it a retreat or a special board meeting, but particularly focused on a Higher Learning Commission visit to be sure that all of you are at least familiar and ready for that visit because likely they will have a session where they'll want to engage with the board.
Okay. Okay, there being no further business, meeting is declared adjourned. Thank you.